...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to compliance with the As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and Star Ledger on December 18th, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are unfilled with the city clerk.
May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit, one turnaround for each speaker?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a manner, in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Please approach the mic. Please state your name, address. You have three minutes.
Lou Parisi, Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Veterans Alliance of Asbury Park. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor Henderson, John Lefredo, on behalf of our citizens and especially our veterans, I wish to express our appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the needs of our citizens and especially the veterans of Asbury Park. Yesterday, we celebrated Veterans Day, and it was a wonderful tribute to all of the veterans and our families that served our country. And I was proud to be a member of that audience, and it was introduced, I must confess, that it was a good omen when we had beautiful weather for it. And I must tell you how proud I was to see the initiation of our naval ROTC program sponsored in Asbury Park. Four of those youngsters appeared in their Sparkman uniforms and marched proudly down to introduce our program. And then too, we can be equally proud of the Asbury Park High School band that played that stirring introduction of our Star Spangled Banner. And to those of you on the dais and those other members of the community that spoke, we were certainly inspired by your messages that moved us and paid such glowing tribute to all who served. But I'm especially proud too that what happened not only at the ceremony but after at our post. You know, every year, the Veterans of Foreign Wars honor the men in blue that guard our lives and our homes every day of our lives. And yesterday, we paid special tribute to Johnny Washington, one of our Policeman of the Year awardees. And I would like you to know that each year, when we nominate from Asbury Park the Policeman and Fireman of the Year, they go on to represent the district, that is the county, the state, and the nation. And we can be very proud that these men, some of whom are here today, and I see one of them, one of the nominees today, that went on to win not only the Post Award, but the county, the state, and national awards. And I think it's only fair that we pay tribute to those policemen and firemen that guard our lives, just as our veterans protected us overseas. We have with us today our own men and women that watch our safety and our homes 24 hours a day. And I would ask that we really show our appreciation for those for to whom we owe so much. I mentioned, of course, Johnny Washington, but I certainly don't want to neglect the Fireman of the Year awardee. And I did forget. Now, if you just wait a moment, I'll be back to him. No, I'm sure. Oh, yes, of course, Paul Anunziata, and I apologize to Paul. And well, let's give them another big hand.
It was a tough act to follow. Thank you very much, Lou.
My name is Maureen Nevin. I live at Deer Lake Court, Asbury Park. I have a couple of things. First of all, I was very glad to hear, in talking to Fred just now, that the properties that are going to be voted on tonight, there's an issue about the Michaels properties that's going to be voted on. And they are actually going to be leased to the city, or I'm sorry, the city is going to lease them to Michaels in some sort of a lease agreement. And I think that's, no, that's not right. Did I miss it?
Long-term lease, yes.
Long-term lease. And I wonder if we could find out what that process of those leases will be fixed to tonight, if that's possible. And on the snow removal, we both, Amy and I suffer with Deer Lake Drive. I always wondered why we can't put it in trucks and truck it away to some of the, you know, we've got enough vacant lots to probably open up another city. I know there's probably some water issues, Sue, maybe with Deer Lake. If you could explain that, why we couldn't just do that? Because the problem is that there's not enough room for the cars and the snow when we get a really heavy snowstorm.
You can't put, you can't put snow like that into the lake.
Yeah, yeah, I figured the lake. But what about the lots, though? Because it's going to run off from Deer Lake Drive right into Deer Lake anyway.
I know.
And it seems kind of, if there's something that we could discuss about that. I'm glad that you're not voting on the Sackman properties tonight. I hope that we could put that off, seeing that that's a long-term agreement, if that could be put off until the new administration takes office in the next year. I'd like to get some feedback on that. And I'm not at all sure that those discussions should really be held in private session. I know it's under the contract negotiation you use for the exemption to the Sunshine Law, but I'm not sure that I agree. So I'd like to get some discussion on that. And Mr. Sackman already has historic credits that he gets from the federal government on his properties. And also, is he up to date on his taxes that he does owe? I think most people can't even challenge their tax bills unless they have them paid. I think it's only fair that the commercial accounts have to do the same. Thank you. If you could respond.
Jackie, do you want to field any of those questions?
Sure, sure, Mayor. The closed session is an opportunity to, for City Council to discuss contract negotiations. And so it is required and should be a conversation that is dealt with in private regarding this council not taking actions on the Sackman pilot, well, the pilot requested by Carl Sackman. I mean, the term of this council expires on December 31st, so they will conduct business as necessary through that date. And I would check with the PE, but picking up snow, putting in trucks, and dumping it on lots sounds like a very labor-intensive practice. So I'm not so sure how practical that may be, but it is a discussion that I will have with our city engineer.
Do you want to talk about the Michaels issue at all?
The Michaels group, I actually don't recall off the top of my head. We do have a redevelopment attorney here. Do you recall, and I'm sure it is in the agreement, Jen Credidia? Or Jen Dawson? Do you recall what the lease, long-term lease payment is to the city? I don't recall.
Jen, could you please stand up, please?
It's $640,000.
Yeah, it's for the whole
Okay.
Somebody from the Michaels group is here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $640,000.
Would you, all right, go ahead.
Is, over what period is that?
Thirty years.
Next.
There was one thing that wasn't answered.
Sorry, three minutes are up.
He didn't answer.
Next.
That was about whether the taxes were paid on Sackman's arrears.
There is a current amount that is in dispute that we hope to have resolved before the week is out.
Good evening, Dan Harris, 17 Ridge Avenue, Asbury Park. First, congratulations to the winners of the election. It's good to see Jesse and Joel get your chance to serve the city in another capacity. To those who are leaving, thank you for your years of service, and enjoy your retirement from public service, because now you've got a little more time on your hands, okay? Now, a couple of things I'd like to say. First, Amy, the applications for recertification to zoning boards, and they already went out. I remember I turned mine in today, okay?
So, all the boards went out?
I don't know if all the boards went out, but I did get mine, and I did return. Yeah, and planning, planning zone, and they've been returned. So, I mean, it's in the works.
Okay, great.
Okay, John, thank you for letting the world know that Springwood Avenue is being used as a junkyard for city vehicles. I don't see city vehicles getting dumped anywhere else in the city, except in the southwest quadrant. And that's kind of an insult, because they have been, it's been like that for years. First of all, it's the parking lot over here behind the train station, and then where we can't park everything there, so let's just put it on Springwood Avenue. And that shows a disregard for the quality of life of the people in the southwest quadrant. But my, my big thing is, I come here and support the Michaels group. As a lifelong resident of this area, either in Neptune or border Neptune or in Asbury, they're coming into an area that's been blighted and basically ignored for 40 years. Jen Dawson has come out, she actually came to our church, sat down with us, with the membership of the church, and explained the project. She went to St. Stephen's, sat down with that congregation, and explained the project. So, most of the people in the southwest are very much, a lot of the people, I'm not going to say most, but we're very much in support of that, because she's not talking about building a project. She's talking about building quality housing for people who maybe don't want to live on the boardwalk, but everybody in the city deserves quality housing. And I personally support their efforts, and as did the board would also, because it's really going to help the city. As when we discussed with the church, once something like that is developed in the southwest quadrant, I don't refer to it as the West Side, but we talk about the southwest quadrant, because that's the area of the city that's basically been ignored for 40 years, it will help the value of property around there, it'll help the value of churches around there. And it's where Renaissance, a true Renaissance can begin for the entire city. So I do support the Michaels group, and ask you to look at their application in a good light. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Lori Ross, I'm here representing the West Side Community Center, 115 Dwood Avenue. A couple of things. And I just want to first say, congratulations, Councilwoman Moore, and your entire slate for winning the last, this past election. We certainly hope there's going to be some positive change. For Mayor Campbell, I heard that you talked about volunteering at the West Side Community Center. Although that was not true, I hope that we will have you now that you'll have some more time to volunteer, because we certainly need that. Couple quick questions with regards to one policy regarding city equipment. I understand that the deputy city manager, Mr. Nuccio, had some issues with the West Side Community Center using the city's podium. And I think that there may be an edict now that no community-based organizations can use any equipment. And that was simply because I was told that the mayor was going to speak, as well as elected officials who have brought money into this town. So I want to know what the policy is, to include the fact that I am aware that there are other organizations that use vehicles and trucks. So I just want to make sure that I don't do anything or ask for anything that is not permissible. The other question is, again, another policy issue, particularly as it relates to the city's hiring practices. I'm looking at the MOU for this year, and one of the things that I noticed was, you know, terms and conditions and stipulations for employees. One of the things that I noticed in attachment A was that there must be a criminal history check conducted on all employees. During the tenure of Mr. Nuccio, when the child molester was hired, I want to know if that in fact was followed. There's a whole lot of issues with the hiring practices. I was told that there was a residency requirement when the payroll rep son had actually gotten a job. So I don't know. Hopefully, moving forward, this new slate sweeps clean, because there's a lot of misinformation given out there. If it's true that there are certain stipulations to this transitional aid, it doesn't appear that the city is necessarily following it. But again, I want to know, the two policy questions. The first being use of city equipment. The other is the city hiring practices. And is this MOU indicative of the last MOU? And when Mr. Nuccio actually hired the child molester, was this followed? And I'm also asking, the third thing is, is that there be an investigation by the new council on all the hiring practices, because there's a lot, as we know, that is going on that's not been seen the light of day.
I would like to comment first, Ms. Ross. You made it, you've been here, I don't know how many times, and I know at one council meeting, you made a prediction that everyone sitting up here would be gone. Well, that prediction ended up turning out wrong.
Well, you're not here.
Excuse me, excuse me, that number one. And I will say this, if you have a question to ask me, please ask me. But this stuff that you're getting from the streets, or wherever you're getting it from, is inaccurate and incorrect. Next question, or anyone else wanted to respond?
Yeah, I would, Mayor. Lori, regarding policy, city equipment, actually, the first time that I was addressed with a question about lending city equipment was for the event held at the West Side Community Center. I wasn't aware of any policy. I don't believe a policy exists, but it's probably something that the city should establish, so we could lend certain equipment and do it according to the policy procedures that we create. So I don't believe anything exists currently, but it's something that we should put in place. Regarding the hiring practices and the MOU, a background, well, let me say that our application for employment did reference if there was any criminal history within the last five years, or it was a certain period, and this individual happened to be just outside that period. So his questions were answered truthfully. He has served his time, and he has the work in sewer qualifications to work at our sewer facility. Also, John Moore and John Lefredo currently sit on a personnel committee that was recently established to review such those things that you brought up, where individuals, some individuals were being hired, that there was belief that we could have found residents, and the personnel committee was established. That personnel committee will be reorganized as of January 1st.
Well, good. But again, it does say a criminal history check was conducted. Doesn't say anything about application, it's a check.
Next.
Can I just ask a question related to that? What type of the attorney and me is like lending out equipment? So what type of equipment would we be lending out?
This was a podium, a speaker's podium.
Oh, okay. All right.
Good evening, Council. Congratulations, John Moore and Amy, and best to all of the rest. Regarding the pilot programs and the tax abatements, especially the one over here on Madison Avenue, 64 units above the Savoy, that used to be the old Savoy. Clearly, you know, it baffles me that the planning board would even approve that, because number one, I don't know if anybody's considered the stress that it's going to put on our city in regards to the garbage pickup, the sewer, and probably the parking, of course, the parking. Bottom line is, when it was, when it was the original building, there was offices up there. So the only refuge we had to be concerned about was paper from the office building. That was it. It seems to me that the planning board just put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, and I don't know how that happened, but they did it. And the other thing is, the refuge, you see it along Cookman Avenue. People that live upstairs, you look in the garbage. I've seen our garbage men check the garbage, because they're putting their garbage in there instead of what's supposed to be used for, you know, cups, or papers, or gum wrappers, or whatever, for the people that are walking on Cookman Avenue. We are going to have a serious problem. There is no ingress or egress for a garbage truck to get in there. What are you going to do? Line up, line up cans on the outside? I have no idea how that got passed, but I'm telling you, somebody must have been falling asleep. I just, I just sincerely think, oh, as far as the bathrooms, there'll be 64 bathrooms? 64 bathrooms? When before, possibly, possibly, there might have been three or four washrooms. This is the problem you have when you've been around this city all your life. You kind of like remember what some of these buildings were like. So I clearly would say that to approve a pilot program for this particular building would only be, in my opinion, pouring salt on an open wound. Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I want to talk about the giveaways. You tabled them for tonight, but I want to know about the Michaels. Are they not buying the land? Is this a long-term lease on the land? Or is it, I thought they were going to purchase the land and then build the building. They're getting all these kind considerations. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, Mr. Kelly, you said that the three that are up there right now are going to be there to December 31st. Major decisions that they're going to be making in the next few weeks are going to affect our children, our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren. I don't think any major decision should be made until that new council is sitting up there. You're going to put a burden on them from now with all these giveaways that you're talking about in the agenda. It's not fair. The thing that you should have given us tonight was the beach revenue for this year and the parking revenue, which we didn't get. That's more important to the taxpayers that are sitting in this room than the giveaways that you're going to do on Springwood Avenue. And I don't agree with Dan Harris, I'm sorry, Don Harris. It's, it's not a good project for Asbury Park, and I'll stand on that. And you'll see that it's not. Renters are not a good project for Asbury Park. We need homeownership on the West Side. That's what you should have. And you should have businesses there. And the planner that we have in the city should get out of his office and travel this state and get businesses to come into Asbury Park. It's up to him, and it's up to Mr. Gilmore to do that. I'm not interested in three weddings in a month. That's not what his job is. His job is to go out and seek businesses for this city. I think that's what his job description says, both of them. They should be out there looking for people that want to build houses here. They don't have to be the Taj Mahal. They could be a nice house, they could be a duplex house, anything like that. But renters? No, we have 70% now. And the other thing is, with this revale now, some people are getting reevaluated already and raising their taxes, 20%. Nobody knows who the 20% is. Don't you think we should know if we're in the 20% category? Nobody knows. And that's going to go on for five years. Some of my friends have been raised $50,000 in one year right now because a house was sold in their neighborhood. That is not the way to do it. You've got to notify the public when they're going to revale your home. It's not fair. Some houses went down, some houses went up already in one year. I mean, like, that's, I don't know who came up with that idea. But, you know, it's not a good idea. So I'd like an answer on the Michaels. Are they leasing or buying?
The Michaels group is entering into a long-term lease with the city for 30 years.
30 years.
Correct. So they would be required to re-lease the property at the end of the term.
Don't you think we should know with the
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Don't you think we should know with the full taxes on and what you're giving them?
Ms. Moreno, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Motion to close public session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are on to item E on the agenda, correspondence received. I have a memo from Carrie Geno regarding the award of a bid of the RCA project for 1107 bond. I'll be taking a vote. Okay. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of the October 15th meeting. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We are, a bill resolution for $2,582,528.03. Move it. Second.
Question. Could I have two bills separated and voted on separately? There would be 4-01-46870-880-297 for $51,712.16.
Can you remove me from that one too as well, Melody?
They're going to be voted on separately.
Okay.
And then the second one would be 4-01-55-001-000-010 for $250.
Okay, so we'll take the vote with these two items.
Out.
Out?
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Now, do you want another vote with these two items?
Please.
Okay.
Can we be more specific on the items, please?
Page number 11.
Well, the first one is for $51,712. I don't, don't know.
I have that one.
It's for McManaman and Scotland.
Hold on, get intense.
Page 11.
For a bill going back to 2010. And we went through this last year, paying bills going back to 2006, 2007. This will, I'm getting close to $200,000 in back bills that this council's been burdened with, that I told people jokingly, I could balance a budget every year if I don't pay my bills. So I have a problem paying bills from four years ago. The second one is for a lousy $250. It's somebody that canceled a wedding. Under special events, there are no refunds. There are no refunds. The provision calls for no refund, so.
Melody, page 11 for the 51.
Okay.
Page 11.
Okay, fine. I don't care what page it is.
She asked for the page.
Oh, okay, no, no.
They're both on page.
The other one's not me, so I don't know what page that is.
Yes, they are both on page 11.
They're both on page 11. And again, this is the principle. Special events says no refunds. If sorry it rained, you do not get a refund. Sorry your wedding did not show up, you do not get a refund. Sorry the bride got cold feet, you do not get a refund. I mean, it's that simple.
I vote to give a refund if your, if your wedding partner doesn't show up on the day of the wedding, but not rain.
I have no idea why they got a refund, but the ordinance does not call for it. So I'm not breaking the ordinance. That's fine.
Part of the vote was the McManaman and Scotland bill. My understanding was the city had received revenue that was misapplied and spent on something else, and then there wasn't any money to pay McManaman and Scotland, and something else, and then there wasn't any money to pay McManaman and Scotland, and it took a while for the CFO to figure out exactly what happened. So this is to pay an older bill, but not for the fact that McManaman and Scotland hadn't submitted a timely bill. They didn't submit a timely bill. The escrow money wasn't appropriately paid. It was unfortunately used for something else. And unfortunately, they had been waiting for a, a long time to be compensated for work that they performed.
You've got to pay them. They did the work. I don't get how you get away with nothing.
Are we voting on this separately?
Yes.
Okay.
On each one separately or the two of them?
Each one separately.
Okay, the vote for the $51,712.16.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
No.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, the second item, the $250. Councilmember Lefredo?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
No.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
No.
Mayor Campbell?
No.
Okay, we're on to applications. I have two applications for licenses for various dates from the Premier Theater Company and the New Jersey Gay Men's Chorus. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
No.
Yes, she's yes. Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Everybody's falling asleep.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I have an application for a raffle license for the Premier Theater for various dates. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, I have an application for a raffle license for the New Jersey Gay Men's Chorus. Do I do that?
Yes.
I have an application for a social affairs permit for the New Jersey Hall of Fame.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, a special event is outlined by Alicia Floyd during the work session.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to resolutions. I have a resolution to cancel sewer charges at Atkins Avenue and Boston Way, Block 805, Lot 1. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Abstain.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution to cancel sewer charges at 1201 Memorial Avenue, Block 203, Lot 5.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A, a resolution to cancel sewer charges at 1201 Memorial Avenue, Block 203, Lot 5, due to sewer capping. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution acknowledging and accepting a memorandum of understanding between the city and the state of New Jersey Division of Local Government Services for transitional aid.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution temporaries, temporarily suspending and/or revising the metered parking requirements within the city on certain dates.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park referring proposed amendments to the Main Street redevelopment plan to the city of Asbury Park, planning board, directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to NJSA 40-A:12A.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing compensation payment to Jonathan Chinchilla upon his separation of employment.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn? Yes, and Jack, we talked about, we'll start putting in where these people, the departments they're from, so I can figure out where we're losing people.
Sure, absolutely.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing compensation payment to Crystal Everett upon her separation of employment.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing compensation, compensation payment to Sergeant Robert Ash upon his retirement. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing compensation payment to Herbert Howard upon his retirement. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the fiscal year, fiscal year 2014 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution to apply for the grant for the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over 2014 Year End Holiday statewide crackdown. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution, public health nursing services from January 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2015.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Asbury Park and the Superior Officers Association. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Item P has been withdrawn. We are on to item Q. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing an HMFA agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for the proposed housing project known as Renaissance on Springwood Avenue. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to ordinances. These are first readings. I have an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 26-2 entitled Residency Requirements of Chapter 26 Personnel Policies of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. I got a question about that.
It needs to be moved. Second.
We can have discussion. Can you explain it?
Once we get a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
No, no, we're not putting it on.
We're just a question.
Okay.
We're bringing it forward for discussion, so.
Well, Jack, I got to find my notes on it. If you explain it while I'm looking for my notes, hopefully I'll, I'll have my notes.
I'm sorry, do you still want me to explain it now?
Yeah, can you explain it for just a second?
Sure. Having spoken with civil service a number of times, this section for civil service purposes is not clear enough that we want to rank Asbury Park residents first. So civil service has provided me with the language necessary, and Fred modified our current ordinance to include the language that was provided by civil service.
And this is for non-uniform classified civil service positions. It's similar to what we have right now for the police and fire, where applicants are segregated into different classes depending upon residence, with Asbury Park residents being looked at first, then other residents of Monmouth County, then moving to residents of counties contiguous to Monmouth County, then to other residents of the state of New Jersey, and finally to other applicants who are residents of the United States but who do not reside in New Jersey.
No, and I think that was fine. I, I couldn't support that more. I think my question was trying to make a reference or trying to, and now, I, we had a packet like this thing, so now I can't find my note. But my note was basically, can we make any reference to the personnel committee in, in that we're looking at Asbury Park residents, but, you know, just putting a little more teeth with the personnel committee that they're going to be, it's going to be run by them, or they're going to have some sort of say in the hiring practice. And now, if I had my notes, I would be much more eloquent in what I'm saying.
Well, it's only the first reading, so you can have it for the second reading.
Well, but we ought to resolve it before you introduce it, at least in concept, to make sure that everybody's in agreement, that the positions that would be subject to this are positions that would be hired by the city manager. So what you're looking for is to.
In conjunction with the personnel committee. So he hires in conjunction with, just so we start, so we start recognizing we have a personnel committee and that we're going to start, you know, using them in terms of evaluating hiring. I'm not saying it stops at the personnel committee, I'm just saying the city manager in conjunction with the personnel committee.
Yeah, I would recommend that the city manager, prior to making any hire, meets with the personnel committee.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the idea. The recommendation's a recommendation. The city manager still makes the hire.
Okay, but can we put in there the personnel committee, just so we start seeing the importance of the personnel committee?
We can certainly, at our reading tonight, add language, so long as everyone is in agreement that you want language to that effect put in, you can introduce it with that language incorporated, and then I, I draft the language, and then it would be advertised with that language in it.
So long as it's not to cover some of the project, a, a process, I don't see where it would.
Yeah, the personnel committee's to councilmen, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's just that part of, part of any hire, the, the city manager, he shall meet with.
In consultation with the personnel committee. Ultimately, it's the city manager's appointment in this and the future form of government. But in consultation with is fine.
Fine.
Fabulous.
I read it, and I didn't have a clue what it meant, so I'm glad you explained it. And truthfully, I don't think it's strong enough. I remember when the city used to have an ordinance, if you got hired and you lived out of town, you had a year to move into town, burp outs, guess what? You're unemployed.
We had to stop it.
Why did we have to stop it?
The state made us stop it.
Yeah, it's the state.
I don't disagree with you, Jack.
Why?
They made us stop it.
Yeah, can somebody give me that rolling?
I, I believe there are certain municipalities right now that do have that requirement. So I'm not, I'm uncertain what the state's idea was, perhaps for professionals, I, I